April 16th. We have one item of business, which is the discussion regarding the proposed F Y E 2020 City of Norman budget, general fund and special revenue funds. And before I let our finance director speak, I would like to show everybody the Artful Inlets T-shirt.
There it is.
The inlets were completed and everybody got to see them at the Friday art walk.
Did the paint wash?
No, the paint has not washed out.
It dried quick enough.
This is an idea that came from Councilmember Beerman's hometown. So it's really good. It's a great program. I hope this is not selling these T-shirts is not how we're going to fund Stormwater.
Oh, I thought that was it.
That's, yeah.
Okay.
We're going to bake some.
I mean, isn't Stormwater going into Legacy Party Fund?
We added a line item to the budget for that.
T-shirts sales. Hundred twenty-five dollars.
Times a hundred and twenty-five thousand. You can sell one to everybody.
Buy all, just buy one in the city.
We'll just send everyone.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm Anthony Francisco and I welcome you to the fiscal year 2019, 2020 budget. You know, getting used to that fiscal year 20. Time marches on. I would like to introduce those of you who have not met Kim Kaufman, our budget manager. She has done the lion's share of the work on this budget document and getting everything into the system. And I give her, you know, just all the credit for the hard work that she's done. She deserves all the blame for any mistakes that you see in the budget document as well. And as you're reviewing the budget document, proofread it as well. So if you just see any typos, that sort of stuff, please let us know.
I marked it.
As you're reading over and considering the budget for adoption as we move forward, just understand that, in my opinion, the budget is the most important document that the city puts out on an annual basis. Because it communicates a lot of things to not just the council, but also to the public at large. It is published on our website and it is available at the Norman Public Library for anybody that wants to see it in whole or in part. But the budget is a policy document and all of the financial policies of the council are clearly stated in the document. It is the financial plan for how we intend to use the city's financial resources as we move into the next fiscal year and into the future. It's an operations guide. There's information in there that talks about all of the city operations. And it is a public communication device. So again, it talks to the public about everything that the city does and shows the public where all the employees are, how much is budgeted for each function of the city. It's all in there. Norman's budget process is really a year-round process. We have started working from the council's directions going back certainly to September, the capital budget going back to November of last year. And all of the input that we have received from council so far is, to the extent possible, included in this budget proposal that you see going forward. Where we are in the process now is the first of three study sessions that will be held to introduce the city manager's proposed budget document to the council and to the public. So this is just the first of three. There will also be two public hearings, and that is a suggestive change by council this year. We have historically had a public hearing just before the adoption of the budget, but council requested that this year we have one earlier in the process. So next week, in next week's council meeting, we'll have the first of those two public hearings during the council meeting. So as we move into the document itself, I would just kind of briefly discuss the format of the document for anyone who is reading it for the first time. The layout of the document is really the most summarized information is given at the front, and then the more detailed information is given at the back, toward the back. And there's actually a separate budget document for the capital improvement plan, which gives detailed information on all of the capital projects that are budgeted for this year and planned for over the next five years. So again, the things that I would say that you have to understand and read if you want to get a holistic picture of everything in the budget document, you can just read the first fifty or so pages. That may sound like a lot, but it's really not because the whole document is over 500 pages.
There's a lot of pictures.
There's a lot of pictures. But I would strongly suggest that everyone read the city manager's letter, which is the first nineteen or so pages in there. It gives all of the background information on the things that we have to do and gives a summary and background information on the environment under which this budget was considered. The first numbered nine pages give a community profile. It gives demographic information on our city. Yes, ma'am?
We have to update the festival list.
Mayfair.
Mayfair, and there was something else that's Midsummer Nights.
I didn't know about Midsummer. Is that not?
That was done. But we have the Norman Native American Frontier Days.
Monarch Festival in September.
All the film festivals.
Yeah, now, I did notice that the, I did know that the Mayfair had gone away, but just understand that those were printed last December. And so, you know, it cost a whole lot of money to change that. So I just apologize for that. We certainly did not think Mayfair was going away. I did not know about Midsummer Nights Festival. We're still the city of festivals and I'm hearing about a lot new ones.
New and fun.
So the theme is the theme, and so I just apologize for that little bit of an oversight. We give benchmark comparisons that I would draw your attention to that, and we state and restate that Norman, for a city of our size, population-wise, land area size, we're a very small organization. Per capita expenditures, per capita personnel, we're really small relative to cities our size and cities in our geographic region and cities with our similar characteristics. We're lean and mean.
Correct.
The financial policies of the city again are stated clearly. And then on pages 54 through 117 is where I would direct the council's attention. In particular, those fund summaries, that is the level that council usually considers the budget. It gives summarized information at that category level, salary and benefit category, supply and materials category, in those fund summaries for every one of the city's 28 different funds. Then going on forward, there is departmental detail for all of the city operations, and that's where the goals and objective statements are given, the mission statements, the organizational charts for everything that the city does, it's in there. It's in alphabetical order, and I think that kind of sometimes confuses folks. But we think it's easier for the public to understand, not necessarily in the numerical order that from an accounting standpoint, we look at things, but from the public standpoint, we think it's easier to just, you know, police comes before public works. It's just alphabetical. And then there is glossaries and appendices that give definitions for all of these terms that you'll hear me throwing around as the process goes forward. There's appropriations, there's incumbences that you'll hear me talking about. There's a definition for all of those things. So at any time, if I'm giving a term that you don't understand, there's no stupid questions, send me an email, this is, I'm speaking to the public. Send us an email, we'll try to get your questions answered, and if we don't know the answer, we can send you out to the appropriate person from one of the departments who can answer your questions. When the council adopts the budget, you re-adopt those financial policies that are stated in the budget document. So if there are any of them that you'd like to revisit or change, now might be a good time to do it. But as we're discussing these policies, they are stated, and we'll talk about them in a little bit of detail here in a moment. We must have a balanced budget at every fund level. And when I say balanced budget, I mean that there has to be a positive fund balance in each fund. There has to be money in the savings account. When I talk about fund balance, what we're talking about there is, I call it the savings account. It's the area where we have stored up funds over time within that individual fund where revenues have exceeded expenditures, and so we have money in that savings account. When the council adopts the budget, one of the actions that you're taking is that you are appropriating fund balance for all of the projected revenues and expenditures that we project to come in over the course of the fiscal year. And each of those funds has to have, at the end of the fiscal year, a projected positive fund balance. And as we'll talk about going, as we move forward, there was at least one of the city's major funds that we were projecting would not have a positive fund balance. So we're suggesting a fairly major action to be taken as it relates to that public safety sales tax fund. For each of the funds, there is a five-year forecast on where we are going in the future if we stay on the current path. Those projections are just, as we'll talk about, based on formulas of the current expenditures inflated, given historic rates of increase. But the point is that they're based on if we stay on the current path. In our general fund and in a lot of the funds, if we stay on our current path, we are going to have financial difficulty. And so a lot of the times what I hear, what I hear is that, you know, if you looked at the budget document from three years ago or four years ago, where we projected that we were going to be now, we're way off from that. And it's our job where we're projecting things to be in the negative, to make sure that we're way off from that. And we want to, we want to take those actions in a looking-forward basis to make sure that we are staying in a good financial stead going forward. We have written debt, debt policies, capital reserve policies, and operational reserve policies that are stated in the document for the utility funds. We try to project such that we would have levelized rates over a five-year period that we would not have to have unforecasted rate increases going forward. Then there are transfers to the general fund from the utilities and from the room tax fund to cover the costs basically of the services that the general fund is providing to those utilities. There's an overriding statute that we have to comply with, and that's the Oklahoma Municipal Budget Act. And that is in Title XI of the Oklahoma statutes. It is verbatim quoted in your budget document. So if you're having trouble sleeping some night, read it. All of the information is there. It complies with governmental accounting standards, and Oklahoma's law is complying with everything that we need to do. We try to comply with that statute. Norman has a stated reserve policy. The Net Revenue Stabilization Fund states that reserve policy. It's been adopted by ordinance over a period of years. You might recall that council changed our reserve policy in the last year. Policy now is that we must have a minimum of a 3% fund balance based on 3% of expenditures in the general fund must be held in the fund balance in the general fund by that ordinance. We also have a 1% emergency reserve budgeted allocation in the general fund. There used to be 2%, it's 1% now. And there has to be at least a 4% of general fund expenditures set aside in a separate net revenue stabilization or rainy day fund. And there are strings attached to when council can appropriate money to be spent out of the rainy day fund. And I would point out that council's never appropriated any money out of the rainy day fund so far. You've kept that prudent standard. We've been able to maintain it. We've been able to maintain the rainy day fund at the targeted level, and that's a good thing, and that's been recognized. Our policy has been copied in a lot of cities in Oklahoma. It's been recognized by Moody's Investor Service as being a sound and prudent reserve policy, and we try to stick to that. So here is where we stand with the fiscal year 20 budget. All of the revenues coming in altogether from all of the various sources, it's about $265 million projected for fiscal year 20. Sounds like a big number, but for a city our size, that's not really that much. This year, we have a lot of money coming in from new bond issues. As you know, the citizens of Norman voted a new transportation bond this last year, and we have the first $20 million of that money projected to come in in this fiscal year. That shows up in that other revenue category that you see there. On the expenditure side, we're projecting to spend down $264 million of that in the areas of expenditure, or the major areas that you would think of. Public safety, public works, capital improvements are a major area of expenditure for the city of Norman, and that's for those capital projects that we will be talking about next meeting. The general fund is the largest single fund of the city, but it is only one of 27. We project revenues of $91 million in the general fund this year. And you'll recall that that's up by quite a bit this year. It was $74 million last year in the general fund. And that is because of the change to how we are recording sales tax and use tax now. In the fiscal year 20 budget, where we're suggesting to record the sales taxes from the businesses in University North Park in the general fund, and we're projecting to record the public safety sales tax revenue in the general fund. So that increases the general fund's overall revenue picture by quite a bit. We'll talk about that on the expenditure side as we move forward. But you see that, that blue part of the pie, our dependence on sales and use tax therefore has increased even more. We are very dependent on sales taxes and use taxes to pay for our operations for those services that our citizens want and demand. That's a positive and a negative. Sales tax is a very volatile source of revenue. And as you know, consumer behavior is changing. We'll talk about that here in a moment. But that impacts on our ability to collect sales tax, which impacts our ability to provide and fund those services. So again, I would just draw your attention to that 63% piece of the pie. And this pie looks different in Norman and in cities in Oklahoma than any place else in the country. Most places in the country, you would see a one-third, one-third, one-third sort of a thing, where about a third is coming from sales and use tax, about a third is coming from these other sources that we have here, and about a third is coming from property tax. But in Oklahoma, cities don't get property tax for general governmental operations. So this pie looks a lot different. On the expenditure side, then, in the general fund, we're projecting to spend $92.3 million. So we're projecting to draw down a little bit of that savings account fund balance in the coming fiscal year. Where that money is going is for those services that are on the street, that the people are enjoying and demanding as we go forward. Police, public works, fire, those are the three biggest pieces of the pie. Those are the areas that people demand the most services and enjoy the most services Just for the information of the public, again, this is in the overview section of the budget document, I will just point out a few things. The 8.75% total sales tax that residents of Norman pay when they make a purchase, it's broken out with 2.3% going to the general fund, 0.7% going to the capital improvement fund. And notice that that is 0.7%. No such thing as a capital penny. No such thing as a half cent. It's just a pet peeve of mine. There is one half percent that is from the public safety sales tax, one half percent that is for the Norman Forward sales tax. The Cleveland County Jail continues to collect 0.25%, and 4.5% goes to the state.
Councilmember Clark.
When is that done, the county jail?
Like, the never-ending jail?
My understanding is it was because we're so dependent on sales tax, it was kind of odd that we even allowed them to cut into our piece of the pie because they've got dibs on property tax. So I really would like that back. When is it done?
I'm the wrong person to ask that question. We know that they have collected about three times the cost of the county jail.
Does it not have like an end to it?
Theoretically, there was supposed to be a transitional period where the, after the jail had been paid for, they would continue to collect the tax for this transitional period for the sheriff to operate the jail during that transitional period. But that's like six years now, and so that's a pretty long transition. Now, again, I'm the last person to ask that.
How do we have that conversation? Because it would seem that 0.25% could be used on funding public transportation and whatnot.
It's also county. It's more to, I mean, it's not just Norman.
Well, it's coming out of Norman. So how do we, who should we contact?
I would suspect you contact the county commissioners.
I think we have done that.
And we have done.
We have done that.
There used to be meetings ongoing basis, but they stopped having those some years ago.
Yeah, Councilmember Scott.
So the general fund is going to have to absorb the public safety sales tax, is that correct? So that'll change what this pie is looking like?
It won't change what this pie looks like because we will still record the public safety sales tax as a line item in the general fund. So the public safety sales tax will still be collected, so this pie won't change.
Okay.
And then on the other half of this chart, you see the property tax distribution. And again, what I would draw attention to is that the city of Norman's piece of the property tax is very small. When citizens get their property tax bill, very little of that money is going to the city. The city can only collect property tax to pay for debt service on general obligation bonds that have been voted for by the people and to pay for judgments against the city. So our piece of that pie is relatively small.
Councilmember Castleberry.
Kathy, what's our current general obligation debt?
I would have to calculate it, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna guess that it's somewhere in the neighborhood of $60 million.
Very low compared to our bonding capacity.
It's very low compared to our capacity is.
This would have been a great time to buy bonds.
Well, this, I saw where this, the Norman Public Schools just floated their bond issue at 1.9%.
Yes, sir.
But the ballot language said up to 14% because that's by the state statute. But they, if they didn't use the 14%, I'm not sure why.
On your agenda for next meeting, you're going to see the first proposed issuance of those bonds that the voters approved. And yes, it is up to 10%, but we expect to be in the same market that the school district was. We're hoping to be somewhere 3% or below, and certainly we won't be anywhere near 10%. So this shows the city's portion of the citizens' mill levy, and again, down there at the bottom in the silver is the city's portion. This gives a sort of a look over the past 10 years or so. You see that the city's portion has grown a little bit, but it's still very low. Here, we're looking at the city's sales tax and the combination of the sales and the use tax over a period of years, looking back about 10 years. There's a few things that I would draw your attention to as it relates to this picture. First, going back in time, we had a pretty steady growth rate for sales tax. Use tax was not a major portion of that growth rate. But the 4%, 4.5% historic growth rate was a pretty steady rate for a long time. But consumer behavior has changed. And the sales tax part of that, as you see, where we're projecting to be in fiscal year 2019, for the sales tax piece of that in blue, is actually below where we were three years ago. Now, understand that in that three-year period, a lot of our costs are fixed and have continued to increase, particularly the personnel costs. So the part of that that relates to our ability to pay for those services that we want to provide is stress.
I heard today on NPR that already 6,000 brick-and-mortar stores have closed this year across the United States, and that's more than closed all of last year. So the trend is definitely continuing. Councilmember Castleberry.
But to that point, that if a Norman citizen goes to a physical store or buys it online, we collect tax?
By law, we should be able to collect the tax. If they don't go to a physical store, though, with that store collecting the tax on the city's behalf, it's more difficult to enforce that law that, yes, they should be paying the tax.
OTC has a lot of trouble collecting that.
If a person buys something outside of the state of Oklahoma to be used in Norman, they're supposed to pay a use tax at the same rate as the sales tax, but that's more difficult to enforce now. We, the city of Norman, and working with partner cities and partner organizations, continue to try to enforce those laws that are on the books, both through legislative means and judicial means. We've, we had a major breakthrough, as council knows, last year in the Supreme Court case of Wayfair versus South Dakota, where basically the court ruled that there didn't have to be a physical presence within the state for a vendor to, by law, have to collect the sales tax and remit it to wherever their goods are being delivered. And so we're benefiting from that, and all cities in Oklahoma are benefiting from that. But there's a little bit of a loophole in there because that ruling only applies to businesses that have 250 or more transactions in the state or $100,000 or more worth of transactions in the state. So there's still a lot of hundreds, if not thousands, of small businesses that are not in compliance with that law that exists for everybody. That's the continuing battle that we have. It would be a legislative battle, and legislation has not been passed at the congressional level for whatever reason. But we're talking about interstate commerce, so it's a federal issue.
Councilmember Scott.
I won't follow. On this chart you had here, this is gross, this is all sales tax. This is.
This is sales and use tax.
No, but on the blue, the sales tax, that is not allocating, the TIF allocation comes after that.
Yes, sir.
So this is, nothing to do with.
This is a constant 3% sales tax rate. It does not count the Norman Forward tax or the public safety tax. But if you look back 10 years ago, where we were 3% general fund and capital fund, we're looking at the growth rate for that constant 3%. And it's, it used to grow pretty steadily. It's not growing lately. Use tax is becoming a larger piece of the pie, but as you see, it's still a fairly small relative piece of the pie. We want to continue to grow that use tax piece, but the concern is that flatness, okay? Where our costs are continuing to grow, but our major revenue source is flat. That's the problem that we have.
Okay, Councilmember Scott, and then Holman.
He answered my question.
Okay, Councilmember Holman.
I was just going to mention, I think it was probably two budgets ago, you mentioned, you made a comment about use tax that stuck with me, and it was that when comparing use tax and sales tax, the loss in sales tax, you could, you should think of it in the millions of dollars, and the growth in use tax, think of it in the hundreds of thousands, that it's not enough to make up for the loss, and probably won't be. I mean, I wouldn't imagine. So we can't rely on sales tax collections helping or fixing our loss of physical sales tax.
Okay, Councilmember Beerman, then Castleberry.
With, to that point, with full legislative work on it and also directing additional resources to OTC, we'd have that ability. But one of the big problems is that OTC doesn't have the time or the bandwidth. I mean, they can't even get off of dot matrix printers, let alone having the ability to go after the businesses that are not as big as Amazon, you know, going after the chewy dot coms and the Zappos and the ones who are definitely doing more business than the minimum threshold, but OTC doesn't have. But OTC doesn't have the ability to go and chase after them for that, for that tax. I mean, that's the, that was the big problem when I was working on uh online sales tax and the streamlined sales tax agreements and all of that. As OTC was saying, even with the legislative authority, we don't have the funding to be able to go after them, even though it benefits you, you know, as a municipality, we just don't have the ability to go after them and try and chase them down for it. So.
Yeah, I don't see that change.
No.
Councilmember Castleberry.
Um, somebody that's been to the Oklahoma Tax Commission, they don't have dot matrix printers anymore. And they have over seventy.
Hashtag sarcasm.
Okay. Hashtag they have over seventy percent of agreements with national vendors. And they've added prior to Wayfair of, of collecting the Zappos and organizations like that. So what I was gonna say is the, the thing that really hurts us with the online sales is the people that are in outside the Norman area that would normally buy at a brick and mortar store in Norman, but now have Amazon deliver it to them. So if I'm in Purcell that I used to come to Norman to shop, now it just haven't delivered to me. And so that is really, that's really the, the, the thing that hurts us more than anything else. And so, you know, we have to have destination retail where people want to come here, you know, an influx versus outflux. And I think that's one of the challenges.
That's a very big part of the problem.
The biggest part of this is the convenience of having it delivered to your door and not having to drive anywhere, everywhere else.
Yeah. As we talked about, there's a major change in how we are recording sales tax in fiscal year twenty within the general fund. Council directed that um we prepare this budget based on uh the sales tax collected within University of North Park. Instead of it being a portion to the TIF fund, that'd be recorded in the general fund. And so that's what you see there uh as the, I guess, sky blue piece at the top. Um, the public safety sales and use taxes also being recorded in the general fund now. So the bottom two pieces of this chart are the base general fund sales tax that would have been there historically. The green piece is the public safety sales tax, and just above that is the six hundred and thousand dollars um from the public safety use tax. So all those things together is about fifty-eight million dollars worth of sales tax that we're projecting to be recorded in the general fund this year. We'll talk about the expenditure side here in a moment.
Councilmember Hickman has a question.
Oh, I understand that council had the discussion about the UNP TIF sales tax in the budget. Uh, but I don't recall us having a conversation about the public safety sales tax, and I'm just wondering uh why that change in policy or uh approach in the budget was made and um just kind of justification for that.
Um, we talked about that with the council finance committee at the mid-year review and it, to the full council at, at your study session that, that followed that when you adopted the um financial reports. Um, but basically, the public safety sales tax fund as a standalone entity was going to have a negative fund balance um in fiscal year twenty. It would have been illegal for you to adopt that projected fund balance in the negative. As you'll recall, when the public safety sales tax was uh ordinance was adopted, public safety sales tax two, um, it was always assumed that at the point that the critical capital needs were done, the public safety sales tax um operations would be three eighths percent in the general fund. The public safety sales tax capital needs would be um one eighth percent in the capital fund. Because of the position of the public safety sales tax fund, we're proposing to do that now. Uh, that the general fund will absorb those revenues and those costs. And as we'll see here in a moment, the costs outweigh the revenues. Um, so the general fund is absorbing that.
And that's happening with um the PSSD fund is more negative, is, is in the negative already, but don't we still have a handful of positions left to fill?
Yes, sir.
By ordinance that are, that were required, you know, by law, by what the people voted on in the past?
Yes.
You know how many positions that is?
Uh, there's four additional uh school resource officers, there's two emergency vehicle mechanics, and I believe two communication officers, I call dispatchers, that have not been added to the budget.
And, I mean, I'm just, because I've heard a lot of feedback from people in the community that are not happy about that because they voted on it, and I guess at the time they voted on, I wasn't on council then, that we were telling people that these positions would already be implemented, is what we had told them at the time of the vote. Anyways, is that correct?
Yes, yeah, the, the, the schedule for adding those positions, we would have added the last of the school resource officers last year. Um, we're behind that schedule, both from the natural standpoint of the city and from the standpoint of the school district.
And since we're rolling it now onto the general fund, uh, are we prioritizing filling those positions that were voted on by the people, that approved by the people for which the city has not delivered on the promise to the people? Now that those are general fund positions, are we funding those in the general fund?
Not as proposed in this budget. The timing of that is up to council. But um when we are in a position to add those positions, uh, we would suggest that we'll do it.
But we are adding other positions if I'm reading the proposed FY twenty budget. Okay.
Want to be clear.
Okay, Councilmember Castleberry first, then.
Oh, he's got, is your, is your question based on that?
So is mine. You're not making a difference.
Are you all, all okay with that?
Fight, fight, fight.
Okay, Councilmember Castleberry.
Okay, along those lines on the PSSD, I don't believe it's proper for us to put it in this budget, and this is why. You even say on page X, I guess it's ten in the first year, that the design of the EOC, if you locate Northeast Norman, is near completion, and construction will begin in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty.
Capital projects aren't done.
Correct. They're hadn't even started yet. So I don't see how we can take the PSSD in there because the ballot language to me said upon completion of those projects, not upon breaking ground. So I, I, I need legal, I need somebody to tell me what our legal justification is for doing that. I think the proper way to do it is for the general fund to subsidize the PSSD fund, just like we do the, the um Westwood or any other fund that is negative, not put it all in there. I think it's too early to do that. So I'm, I'm curious how we came up with that.
That's one thing we could do. But again, the proposal is to put it into the general fund as it is, is projected to do in the future, to do that now, so that we can get a picture and a feel for where the general fund will be going forward when we add those additional positions. Because at that point, the general fund is going to be on its own to fund them. In my opinion, and it's up to council to make the decision, but in my opinion, we should get a look at the holistic picture of, of the general fund's ability to fund not just those positions, but all of the resources that the general fund has to provide.
But do we not get that by saying this is what the shortfall is?
Um.
I mean, we know the general fund is, is going to have to fund two million dollars of the PSSD. And to me, that's a lot clearer than throwing it all in there and, and, and combining these numbers and making our revenue look higher than it really is. Growth rates messed up.
Totally your decision.
My other problem with it is the ballot language says upon completion. I don't think we have the ability to say, well, you know, from a county standpoint, we think it'd look better. I don't think we have that choice. I don't think we can put it in the general fund until that, those projects are completed. So I guess I need to.
I don't have the ballot language in front of me, but I'm happy to look at that issue.
But I think we need to follow up on that, because I don't think we, I mean, unless the ballot language gives us some, some leeway. I mean, we, we've been kind of loosey-goosey with ballot language in the past. And that's part of that is, is a trust issue. So I agree with Councilmember Hickman. I don't think we can. It is easy workaround. We just fund it, just something like CART. You know, we're, we're gonna short, we're gonna fund that shortfall. Same thing with Westwood. Any, any fund that was short, we would make an allocation, so that way we could legally adopt the budget.
Totally your decision. And if, and it's a consensus of council, we'll, we'll start to work from that standpoint.
I agree with that as well. I, I'd like the legal opinion for sure.
But I understand, I'm saying we can't go negative. I'm sorry, Steve.
Yeah.
Councilmember Holman.
I was actually just gonna ask what the status of that, the radio system in the EOC was. Because I assume we can't hire two of the dispatchers until the EOC is finished, because there's no way you can fit anymore in the basement of the police department. So.
I, I defer to the fire chief or the police acting chief uh to talk about the timing of the radio system, but I think it's pretty well deployed. Most of the funds for that have been spent. Um, but remember that, that there's bond money that, that has been issued to pay for the EOC building.
So and then, when those uh are all paid for, that, is that going to free up room in the PSSD when those things are finished?
Physical space, you mean, or, or money?
Money.
No, because again, what we issue bonds for, we, we expect to spend uh on the construction of the EOC building.
So I, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Hickman.
The chiefs tell us, are the positions that have not been funded in PSSD, are you ready for them to come online? Are there things that still need to be built or deployed before they, before you need those positions hired?
I think he's correct on the, two dispatcher positions are based on his goal, and it would be better to wait until we got the EOC completed, which at the earliest will probably be the end of twenty twenty, twenty twenty. Uh, December, talking about the end, not the end of fiscal. Uh, now the SROs, we can take them on anytime.
But schools.
Did we talk, are the schools ready to start paying their half?
In the schools, I do not think they will have their half. I have another meeting set up with the superintendents to talk about issues, but I would be surprised if their funds that they're supplying now does not reduce.
Right, that was the, the, the superintendent of Norman Public Schools made a presentation to the Public Safety Sales Tax Oversight Committee, and that was basically his statement that they were not in a position to add funds for SROs, and if anything, they would reduce the amount that they're currently contributing.
We need the mechanics desperately.
Sean's like, no, please.
And I guess another, while, while legal's looking at this question that Robert raised, I'm curious about how do we handle, let's say, the SRO situation that were to be funded, but also cost shared with NPS? Who now doesn't want to, maybe is not able to cost share, and so maybe we, how do we, what, what do we do? Is that, somebody taking notes?
Does it mean we're off the hook?
I mean, I, I mean, I don't mean to answer right now. I'm just, it raises an interesting question where the people voted to fund those positions, but now the community is maybe not wanting or able to fund those positions where the right way of saying that is.
Yeah, that's what I look at with the ballot language and also the agreement we make with schools.
I think it says cost sharing. It doesn't say fifty-fifty.
No.
I mean, that's the part that you gotta, but it does say that we're gonna provide them, PSSD's to pay for SROs.
Yeah, I agree.
No, I think we're.
And it is.
And it is, I mean.
I don't think we've ever said we're not going to do it. We've just said we don't have the money right now to do it. So I, I don't want to leave the impression for anybody that's listening or watching that there's any thinking that we're not going to fund those positions. But right now, with the budget like it is, we don't have the money to do that. Uh, Councilmember Wilson, and then Clark.
Um, the mechanic comment um made me think of, as I went through this, there was lots of positions I felt like we could outsource, but I don't know if that saves us any money. So what are y'all's city managers' professional opinion on that?
I think we certainly outsource something.
Like custodians and mechanics, and custodians was the one that came up in my mind. We have a custodial staff. And then, not that I'm suggesting, I'm just saying, thinking creatively, uh, but mechanics would be another thing that I think that we could outsource. Is that not more?
Mowing.
Mowing was another thing that came up to me.
Custodial services actually is something that we are proposing to outsource. Uh, we'll use a portion of the new central library rather than having additional services to outsource.
Thank you.
Mechanics, are you talking about taking the two?
Well, we have two mechanic positions open, right? So.
There are two that aren't funded. We have fourteen mechanics that we have currently.
Fourteen?
Yes.
So are you talking about taking vehicles to a repair shop?
Well, when I worked with a, a company that had fleet, they actually had some that would come in too. And uh, they did that for cost savings.
There are certain types of repairs, and I'm speaking for the public worship, but there are certain types of repairs that they do outsource. And, and as you know, the, the fleet's equipment operation is outsourced. Um, there was a study done some years ago about how the best to, to maintain that shop and this sort of balance between in-house staff that can respond quickly and is familiar with the equipment of the city is balanced against those things that can be outsourced. And, and I guess I'm speaking for Sean here.
Sean, do you want to make a comment?
One thing I would add, if I may, Mary, these two positions are emergency vehicle technicians, and the chiefs can speak as well as I can. There are not very many of these out there that understand how to operate on these high-tech fire trucks and fleet vehicles. Uh, that we're concerned about our ability to recruit to that level, and we can't, we can't get mechanics today. We do a lowest level. It's one of the biggest problems in our, in our HR area. So these are not something that we can just go to the forgerage or the Chevy garage. These are very unique roles, and that's why they were allocated here, because we've taken on so much of the traditional equipment in public safety that we just, we just can't maintain it with the people that we have.
Okay, Councilmember Clark.
You know, we, we talk an awful lot about, you know, public trust and being, and we all heard from the Stormwater how the money's there, we just need to find it, which.
I've been looking for it.
All right, still looking for it. But I think we need to be mindful and not create any more positions when we have needs for positions that aren't being filled. You know, like uh the sustainability that went with Ready for One Hundred, the tree ordinance and the forester. I'm not saying they're not needed, but we have immediate needs right now that aren't being met. So I feel like that is something that could be fodder at some point of us being irresponsible, and I'm concerned about that perception. So I, I hope this next fiscal year, we can be a little more cautious in creating a bunch of new positions, uh, being mindful that we may have to pick up a larger tab than we plan with the SROs to fulfill our obligations for PSSD and, and other positions we might be adding in the near future.
I think that's an excellent point. That is, and those were all council requested positions.
And good ones. I'm not saying they're not. You know, it's auditor even. That's a new one, but that one hopefully will all save us money. I just think we really need to bring it in there as well. And instead of, we all know we need to increase our lean budget, but there are clearly identified areas of need from our directors already.
Councilmember Biermann.
To that, and I do think we need to have a conversation, maybe a renewed conversation about what, if anything, could be outsourced. Um, I'd like to know more about that study, if you happen to have it and can send it to me. Because, you know, depending on how long ago it was, healthcare costs have risen significantly. Um, and so if we can do things like investigate how, you know, what cost savings would be involved in outsourcing our mowing or more of our custodial services, uh, because those kinds of things, the cost to us, I mean, and frankly, I would like to have a, have a conversation about whether or not it is saving us money to self-insure. You know, I, I would like to know that. When was the last time we had a discussion about that or a review two years ago? And I would like to see that, you know, because it, is that, is that the best way to maintain a high level of health benefits for our employees, but do so in a way that is not costing us quite as much? Um, so, you know, I think these are, these are the conversations that we need to have if we are serious about trying to, you know, tighten the belt in ways that we can. Um, you know, I think, I think those are conversations that we need to have. You know, I, one of the, one of the first things that someone said to me when I was, when I was talking about uh what we were gonna do, you know, because we didn't get the Stormwater bond or the Stormwater utility, was, well, what about, what about mowing? You know, why can't, you know, of course, they were half joking. They were like, well, you know, we could follow OU's path and outsource our landscaping. And I was like, ugh, that reference. But that's not a bad thing to think about, and we need to think about these things. You know, would it be better to bring in a service to do our custodial work? Would it be better to bring in a company to do our, to do our mowing, which is seasonal? So we have year-round employees. Granted, I'm sure that some or all of them do other, do other things for part of the year. But can we get by on a smaller staff to do their things the rest of the year and then just contract for mowing in the summer? You know, I think that these are conversations that we. are conversations that we need to have, because.
Time to start exploring all options.
Things are going to only get more difficult from here. I mean, I'm looking at what healthcare costs, you know, more than thirteen point three million dollars.
Okay.
We got to talk about it.
Would you like to speak to that, because I agree that we have to continue to look at every single thing. I also know that the departments and the city manager regularly go through everything and try to look at, and Judd probably has something to say about that, but I know that this whole discussion about insurance, and it's a huge deal, and it's going up and up and up for everybody, but you want to comment on about why we self-insure?
Sure, I mean, it really cuts out the middleman. It is the cheapest way to go for cities of a certain size, and smaller cities can't do it because they can't take the risk, and we can take the risk, and so you're cutting out one possible shield, you know. So it really is a savings, and it's basically what every city the size of us or higher does. Our health insurance costs really haven't gone up like it may look. It's expensive, no doubt, but it's really average when we do our surveys around, you know, this is kind of an average amount. Health insurance is expensive, but we've only had two rate increases in how many years, Anthony?
Six.
Six. We've only had two rate increases, they've not been double-digit at all. One was one and a half.
One was two and a half.
Two and a half, four and a half. So we kept ours very, very good. We have good consultants that we work hard with to find the best networks that we can that saves us the most money, building in parameters so it can't be abused, and we are having issues with that right now with the unions, because it's, you know, it is something we have to negotiate, or we have different sort of opinion on that, but, you know, so. I overall, I mean, I've been doing this for years, and I think we've done an excellent job in tweaking it, tweaking it, tweaking it, you know, the best that we can, and we're getting ready to, we're looking at going out for bids to see what a fully, you know, we're going to get that just to have it in our mail, but look at other TPS as well.
Great, thanks.
If I could make a quick, I do appreciate those comments, and we already do quite a bit of outsourced mowing. The smaller hand mowing type activities we're adding to, in fact, this year we added a substantial amount to, and that's helping us keep up. But smaller places that are, that are more time-consuming for us, like the Main Street medians and the Lindsay medians, and those are, those areas are contracted services now, and we're adding, we're now starting to add in some additional park, traditional park areas, if you will, into those mowing contracts, and most of our facilities, not all yet, but we're working that direction, most of them already have contracted custodial service as well. So there are savings there, and we're already on that path. We need to continue on that path.
And I would say that a lot of the mowing staff is temporary, they're seasonally hired, so.
Councilmember Wilson.
On the mowing, I know one of the things, while we're having the discussion of Stormwater, that in Carrie's presentations, that a lot of times her staff is used for mowing in the summertime, and it seems like, and I may, I don't know the numbers there, but it seems like that's kind of expensive staff for mowing. I don't know if that's true or not, but I would rather see, so I guess the way I'm looking at this is, instead of us as a city paying to have mowers on staff, that we have Stormwater crew that's maintaining our Stormwater. My goal in looking at this and finding cuts is finding ways to figure out how to actually plump up our Stormwater situation, because I don't think we're getting a utility. It's not happening, so. I don't know if there's an answer to that, or that's just a statement.
Okay, a little different than just the mowing, mowing.
Very unique, and like Judd said, this is mowing channels, outside mowing and so on, so we'd have to look at that. We're, for instance, like Judd, we contract a fair amount of that now, that all of Highway Nine, eighteen miles, is contracted at about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year. What I'm saying is that a lot of our citizens are wanting more.
Right.
We're not keeping up with what we have.
I know.
I get complaints.
And so if you contract it out, you're going to pay more and do less. I don't think that's what the citizens are asking us to do.
Well, and, and just to be clear, I don't want to scare anybody, like, I'm not going through here going, we're going to cut people. I'm just making sure that as a council member, I'm being diligent in asking, have we looked at this? Are we looking at it? You know, is it cheaper? I may be wrong. It may not be cheaper to outsource, maybe cheaper to have, you know, using the people efficiently that we have on, on staff, but that makes me question, why are we, why are we mowing a state highway right away?
The state made us.
How about we push back on that? The state law. The state law that our city. We'll leave them in Oklahoma, and it'll be from forty-eighth lot.
Too bad we can't preempt the legislature.
What happens if you just don't do it?
Hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year.
What happens is you get a lot of calls. I mean, that's the, that's the biggest things we get all summer long. Yeah. Complain about the mowing. It's a big deal. I get, you can't go to church and not hear about, there's trash everywhere, and there's.
Mowing.
It needs to be mowed. Brenda wants to make a comment, and then I'll move to you, Councilmember Castleberry.
For the information on custodial staffing, we used to contract for all of our custodial services in the municipal complex. We had difficulty for several years getting adequate service. It seems to be somewhat unique in what it does, but we finally went to, for this complex anyway, using a part-time staff in the evening. I only have four people that work twenty-five hours a week to clean this, this whole complex, and then I have two daytime people. But what we did propose for, and what we have done already for the east side branch, is that that is contracted, and there is money in this budget opposed to contract out the services for Central. I don't think I can staff enough people to keep that clean, so. I think it is a better bang for our buck to have that contracted out for those buildings.
Compainer libraries, so it doesn't have to provide custodial services for those buildings?
There are buildings.
No, we own them, but they operate them.
That's something that we can certainly revisit, but by their contract that we have with them, we provide certain things, custodial services. There's a lot of things in that contract that probably should be revisited in my book.
Let's do it.
Let's do it.
We've got two awesome brand-new libraries, yeah.
Counsel, for Castleberry.
I'd just like to ask that we get moving on the presentation. I know the next couple slides are more weeds. We're getting too weedy.
There's not going to be too weedy on this budget, on that thing.
But I think there's.
Pile through. Hey, I got sticky notes.
I'm good, I just.
At the high level, again, these are the revenue assumptions that are in the general fund. We projected sales tax at a three percent growth rate, use taxes at three percent growth rate, fines and forfeitures to grow at three percent from the depressed level of fiscal year nineteen, and there's a discussion in there about the reduction in revenue from that category. License and permit to grow by one percent from this current year. We talked about the transfers from the utilities and the new tax fund.
Councilmember Castleberry, you have a comment?
Is it three percent or four percent? I thought you said somewhere in the deal, four percent.
That's four percent.
It's in the writ part.
The writ part says four percent.
Yeah, we backed that down on your suggestion.
Okay. So are the, are the financials at three percent or four percent?
Three percent of the general fund, yes. That's what's underlying what's in there.
But the financials are, I thought when you printed the budget book, you did it at four percent.
Oh, in the out years, it's four percent. That's correct.
After this year.
But for 2020, you got three percent.
Twenty twenty is three percent.
Yeah, thank you.
On the expenditure side, we assume the positions that have been in the budget, we assume that if individual employees are due for a merit increase, they will get it. We did not budget for a cost of living adjustment. We had a question about that from Councilmember Scott. Understand that the negotiation process with the unions is separate from the budget process, so that does not mean that there won't be a cost of living adjustment. We just get budget for one. We make salary and benefit category assumptions in the out years to grow by five percent per year. Historically, they've grown a little bit more than that, but that's what we're projecting in the out years. The service and maintenance category in the, by one percent growth, internal services by two percent. We budgeted for employee turnover savings of eight hundred thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty, and then of two hundred thousand dollars in the out years. You'll recall that in this year's budget, we had a assumption of savings in the service and maintenance and supply materials category that is not built into the fiscal year twenty budget. There's been some discussion.
Why do you think it's going to go from eight, I must have missed something. The turnover savings is going to go from eight hundred thousand to two hundred thousand?
The assumption in the out years is that because the salary and benefit category tends to grow faster than the five percent assumption.
There's just not going to be as much leftover.
I thought the assumption was.
We always hope that, we always try to budget conservatively, and we hope that there'll be more savings than what we're budgeting. We hope that costs won't grow at the rate that we're budgeting, or that we're projecting into the future. But where we err, we want to err on the side of being at a better place than we're projecting.
Because our, our employee costs are going up so much, we just don't think we're going to be able to save eight hundred thousand dollars a year. Councilmember Castleberry.
I know we've had the, seven years I've been at council, we've had eight hundred thousand dollars every single year. Have we ever looked at budget actual on that particular one, or is it too hard to actually?
No, that's why it's eight hundred thousand. That's kind of where, it's about one point five percent of the category.
Do you have?
Historically, that's about what we say.
Do you have some actual data we could look at? Can you present the next finance meeting or something like that, or distribute out to council? I've never seen the budget actual in that, but I know it's just an assumption, so I appreciate that.
The city manager's budget recommends some targeted personnel additions in the general fund. There's a discussion in the city manager's letter about all of the positions that were requested. These are the ones that are recommended, a trades worker in the facilities management area, a cybersecurity administrator, a budget technician to take over the capital budget operation, two mechanic assistants, these are not the ones that Sean is referring to, the emergency vehicle mechanics. These are basically part-time, lower-level mechanic staff that would do the routine tire changes and oil changes and that sort of thing, to free up the time of the certified mechanics to do the higher-level work.
Councilmember Wilson.
So I think we're sending a mixed message to the public whenever, I'm looking at a page that says, general fund personnel added, HVAC unfunded personnel needs Stormwater. That make sense? So. Okay, yeah, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna admit that my sticky notes did not include the letter.
One of the things that was included in the Stormwater utility was personnel, and with the defeat of that proposition, we were too far into our budget process to address personnel and equipment that would have been funded through the utility. So we're going to bring that to you at the appropriate time. Sean's reminded me that we have those needs, and so our, you know, citizens are reminding us too, so.
Okay, well.
So those are, those are yet to come, so.
In addition to these?
The Stormwater?
Yeah.
Well, that's a conversation that we need to have with you as the council.
Okay, so my two cents on this is we need to, these HVAC outsourced, cybersecurity outsourced, budget technician, I don't know what the needs are there, mechanic assistants.
When you say outsourced, do you mean don't do it, or do you mean?
Yeah, I'm saying, yeah, like, if we need, I, maybe I don't understand the needs on HVAC, like, that seems like something you call, like, city.
Jason White.
Guy, Jason White or somebody, to come in. I guess my point is that I'm going to need to see how these guys trump Stormwater.
I'd like to address that part of the HVAC.
Okay.
These positions you see at the top are positions that have been in the unfunded list for years, so they're not brand-new positions that were created over and above these that are in the unfunded list. All of these positions are very much needed. The HVAC trades worker, I have one HVAC technician to maintain over eighty buildings in the city. There, we cannot keep up. We cannot keep up, especially with all the ones that we're adding. We do outsource some of the things, but it would cost twice as much to outsource it as it does for us to do it in-house.
Okay, that's a good answer, then.
And so while I agree, all of these at the bottom are being well, these at the top have been on the list with these for many, many years now.
Okay, so I, I get that, that everybody's very important, and, but I'm going to keep pushing for that Stormwater guy, and wherever we need to cut the, the, somebody else, we're going to have to.
I want to hear a comment about cybersecurity.
Yeah, this is a, this is a position that we've asked for for the last five years. We have one person, and just like what Brenda's saying, as we add these buildings, we're adding connectivity to the buildings. We have fifty miles of buried fiber optics that connect traffic signals, that connect all these buildings together. We're working for redundancy, and typically, a security person isn't going to be someone outside of the company, because you have to have somebody inside with internal credentials, or you would have to have someone mirror them from the inside if you outsourced that. Our level of cybersecurity attacks is not reducing, it's increasing exponentially, and so this is a very important addition. We're seeing cities and counties all around us getting attacks, and they have no plans really to deal with this. We're in a similar position. We have one person that's responsible for all of the cybersecurity attacks that we get on a daily basis, and they're responsible for managing their department, and they're responsible for all of the internal connectivity, as the network engineer is sitting next to me. It comes to a point of negligence when we don't take care of these needs, and that's why I'm proposing this. I've proposed it for five years.
Councilmember Scott.
Again, I want to just quickly say that I don't want to scare anybody. I just want to ask the questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Scott. But I just also want to make sure, we desperately need Stormwater. We know that we've talked about Stormwater. We've taken it to the voters twice, so right now, we need to back up and figure out how that's, that's going to work. But I just want to make sure everyone understands that the positions that are already in here are desperately needed. So, Councilmember Scott.
I have two things, and I guess on the cybersecurity subject, that would, if we were subject to an attack, then that would put our citizens' data, or at least their card information that they pay there to the utility bills online, their addresses, as well as our staff, at risk, and so I think that's very, very critical. And then the second thing is, actually, if we could go back just a little bit about the COLAs, or the cost of living adjustment, I'm wondering why, I mean, I understand that union negotiations are separate from the budget process, but why we wouldn't budget for cost of living adjustments, because it feels like a bargaining tool, you know, and so if we're not, as far as like the unions are concerned, like, are, I don't know how many of our staff members are members of the union, but it feels to me like as cost of living does go increase, then we should be adjusting their salaries to reflect that as well. So I don't understand why we wouldn't budget for that. Can I get an answer to that question?
Yeah, you're going to get an answer.
I would say, you know, I looked at last year's budget, and there were no COLA, there was not a COLA budget in last year's budget, and so. And so basically just followed suit on what had been done before. Budgeting for a COLA does kind of tip your hand to the unions, basically. So, you know, I mean, you know, we're, this is a public document. And so when Gaila and Michael goes in to, you know, they're going to say, okay, you budgeted, this is what you budgeted, and so we want that plus, you know, another percent. So it kind of tips your hand a little bit. I mean, if we know that we're not budgeting for a COLA, I don't know that there ever has not been a COLA, you know, a couple of times.
So then I think that's irresponsible of us to not budget for that then. I'm not really, you know, that's just my opinion. I don't think that we need to be so worried about, you know, I feel like we're sending a message that we're not going to budget for cost of living adjustments as we, when we know cost of living is increasing. And it has historically gone up or we have, and we have granted cost of living adjustments either way, even though we're not budgeting for it. It does seem irresponsible.
We have granted it. We negotiated it. We're told.
Right, so, so it's happening, so why aren't we budgeting for it year after year? Just because it's a negotiating tactic? I think there's something wrong with that.
Well, I don't know that it's, that's the total reason behind that, but.
But that's, I mean.
Historically, it's been handled that way.
Yeah, 80% of the employees are unionized.
So 80% of our employees are unionized and so they're going to most likely receive a cost of living adjustment.
Just remember that we do budget for the merit increases and for the longevity costs.
But there have historically received COLAs as well. I just don't understand why we, I get the whole negotiating thing, sure, but I still believe we should be budgeting for that.
Well, we don't know what the increases will be in a lot of years.
So we're saying zero right now?
A lot of years, yes.
Again.
How about our budgets will be looking and look like?
I don't think that's good face negotiations and it's irresponsible.
Going to get a cost of living. Some unions get bonuses. They don't get cost of living.
Is that what happens here?
Yes.
Historically? Like year after year, they get bonuses instead of COLAs?
Maybe a bonus this year, a couple of next year, a bonus this year.
What happened last year? Bonuses, so then COLA will be this year?
No, COLAs, this current year was this current year, COLAs.
Okay, again, I'm going to go ahead and just say like, we should probably at least be thinking about that and budgeting for that and paying what our employees deserve.
Well, we do know, I mean, I did ask finance what a 1% COLA would be. COLAs would be close to about 650,000. So we know, we know, you know, the ballpark of what, you know, what a 1% would be double that or whatever, you know, if you're going to get 2% or higher.
Okay, thank you.
So we already know, you know, we know, you know, what that COLA would cost us. So we're cognizant of that. You know, the total payroll merits only this next year is 81,500,000. I mean, it's, we're a service organization and our personal costs are predominantly the, you know, the largest portion of our budget. And they're, you know, it's just going up and up.
Yep, many of our staff members are also citizens and they are providing services and receive services.
One of the things that's in the proposed budget is a compensation and classification study. There's not been one done for many, many years. And I thought that, I think that's important for us to go out and compare ourselves to other, you know, peer organizations and see if our salaries are in line with others or whether, you know, and also, you know, look at the job descriptions. Are the job descriptions reflecting what the people are actually doing in those jobs? And so, so that's one of the things that I did include, you know, improved for inclusion in the proposed budget was a compensation and classification study.
I appreciate that.
Councilmember Hickman.
I don't want to be the guy that throws cold water on everybody, but I mean, I think that we have to face the reality here. I mean, I'm looking at on page 57, the FY '20 projected budget. You know, it's drawing down 1.3 million from the general fund balance. It's, you know, while maybe technically a balanced budget, I don't think it's a balanced budget in the eyes of my Mr. Castleberry of the CPA. And I'll tell you now, I don't, I will not vote for this budget.
What is it saying?
With all due respect. And so I think people need to understand, my fellow councilmembers and the public, you know, and I heard a lot of my fellow councilmembers after the general, after the election on stormwater saying, what do you want to cut? What do you want to cut? And now we're wanting to spend, we're wanting to spend, we're wanting to spend. You know, we are in a, we are drawing down on the budget right now. And remember, that includes the TIF money being included in this budget, my friends. If that TIF money wasn't not in there, that's what, four or five million dollars? And I know that PSST maybe has caused a little bit of the, you know, whatever distortion, if you will. But the bottom line is, there's no guarantee we're going to start getting that TIF money July 1st. I mean, I don't know the status of those negotiations, but you know, we've got to be realistic. It's possible that all those dollars may not hit the bank account. As Robert said, when we pass the resolution, you know, to have the budget prepared, assuming the TIF money were in there, that, that's an assumption. It doesn't mean it's going to happen. If we end up in litigation or that, that negotiation drags out for another three, six, nine months, that 1.3 million easily can become two to two and a half to three million. And so we're already spending money out of the fund balance. We're already making assumptions that are beyond our control, I guess is how I'll say, on the TIF funds. And I just think that, you know, we need to, you know, like I heard the passionate people saying after the election about cutting the budget, you know, we need to start having a real conversation. You go back and look at the megatrends from a year ago from, from Steve Lewis's letter. You know, how are we addressing those things? What are we doing to make our budget sustainable? Because even with this budget, if you look in just two more fiscal years, FY '22, you know, the people sitting here two years from now, that general fund budget is projected to go negative, which, you know, we can't keep kicking the can down the road. We've got to start talking about real structural changes.
This is conservative.
And, and real, you know, and, and be cautious about while we may show we have some money now because of the TIF money coming in or whatever, you know, we can't just start spending that money. And, you know, that made me, hard choices for lots of people. Well, that's our friends in the union getting a cost of living increase, whether it's hiring people, whether it's outsourcing positions. I mean, that's why we get paid the big bucks and I just, you know, I felt like I needed to say, you know, this budget already draws down 1.3 million out of the general fund balance and I'm not comfortable with that.
Councilmember Bearman.
So kind of, kind of along those lines, I too thought about the cost of living adjustments and I kind of go back and forth on it because on the one hand, they are Norman residents. They do provide services and get services. At the same time, we are stewards of 120,000 taxpayer dollars, taxpayers' dollars. And frankly, what I, I mean, I don't go into buying a car and say, I have 42,000, but I only want to pay 37. You know, we have to, we have to look at it from a negotiating standpoint because we are the financial stewards of the entire city's tax dollars. And so balancing that with appropriately paying our staff is the struggle we're going to have to make. And I would say that we're not just going to have to make tough decisions on these budgets. We're going to have to make unpopular decisions. Whatever we do is going to be unpopular. We are going to have a lot of people be very upset with us when we cut back on any number of things. And we kind of avoided that with the 2% across-the-board cuts. We nipped and tucked and trimmed and squeezed as much as we could to try and prevent the general public from feeling the impact of it. And now we're at the point where they don't really believe in some, some cases, they don't even really believe we have a problem because we've done such a good job of keeping them from feeling it. So we're falling off a cliff in two years and we have to start making those hard and unpopular decisions now and about things like the fact that Westwood Golf Course loses $400,000 every year and we have three other golf courses in this city. So we have to start, we have to start looking at these things. Cities have been getting out of the municipal golf business for years now. So these are the kinds of things we have to look at because nipping and tucking and trimming 2% again is not, is not going to cut it. It hadn't made, hasn't made a dent in what we're looking at two years down the road, so.
I think one way to put this in context is in FY '18, we found the 4.3 million dollars from the TIF, remember? If we hadn't found that money, if you look at the proposed ending fund balance FY '20, it's about 4.9 million. Without that found money, this year's budget, with all of the TIF money assuming to go into the budget and taking care of the PSST issue, we are right at zero in our reserve. Ju, no, no fund balance, if I'm reading this right.
It would be a rainy day.
We'd be, it would never a rainy day, but we would be, we're right on that margin. I mean, without that found 4.3 million dollars two years ago, that kicked the can down the road to kind of now, maybe a year or two longer if we want to just continue to ignore it, we would be at a budget right now that we'd have zero fund balance reserves other than our rainy day fund. And we would be right on the edge that if something significant happened, being in really, really bad financial position. And I just think that helps to put in context of without that found money, we would be truly having to deal with it right now. And I think that we should try to deal with it as much as we can now and not put it off.
Yes, I think we have some serious budget problems. We have been talking about this for as long as I've been on the council and the budget has, we've been projecting out for like five years. We did do one thing to help. That's one of the things that we've talked about the whole thing. That was the TIF. We've talked about that the whole time. How could we reallocate? So we're ending it and we're going to put all the money back in the TIF. Then one of the other things was the stormwater, trying to set up a stormwater utility to keep from continuing to bleed off more and more money for, for stormwater. We weren't, we weren't able to do that. So that kind of puts us in a really rocky place. Councilmember Holman.
I agree with a lot of what's been said. I think, I don't know if I would, if I feel comfortable voting for this budget either. You know, I think, I think we just are going to have to figure out how to fill that gap before June where we vote on this and whatever cuts are necessary to get there. I mean, that's what voters have told us that we need to do. So we need to do it because previous councils I've been on, we didn't want to do it. And we knew this day was coming and I don't want to be here two years or all of you be here two years and have a bigger problem to deal with. So let's all just understand right now, we're going to have to make some real tough decisions before June. And let's figure out in this budget.
The one thing I would say is, you know, whether it's coming out of this meeting, what we staff need is direction from you on areas that you want to cut. And then it's our job to, you know, figure out the numbers. But if you say, we, we don't want to add a sustainability officer or we don't want to add a cybersecurity officer or we don't want to expand in this area. Instead, we want to expand in stormwater. That's the sort of thing that we need to hear. If, if you want to say, we don't want to draw down the fund balance, then give us that direction that you need to find us 1.7 million dollars.
I don't want to draw down the fund balance.
We need a consensus of.
I don't want to draw down the fund balance.
I do not want to draw down the fund balance.
And then do you want to do what we did last year? Of, of doing that by making an assumption of savings in service and materials? That's a game, you know? Yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Clark and then Councilmember Castleberry.
That was kind of my question was what is the process then? Like, do we all make a slash list and have a special meeting where we say, golf course, I'll be the unpopular one and say the Forrester? Like we created ordinances that required more staff. I feel like it was needed, but entirely irresponsible at this time. So is that what we do? We just make a list of everyone's, we can survive without this? Sure?
Yeah, that's again. The council should not be talking about positions, we should be talking about areas. But for example, if you say that we can't afford to do this internal audit thing, that's the area, okay? That's, that's what we need to hear and we need it as a consensus. And, and we, we can't afford to expand our mowing program. That's the area. And then we go back and say and see how that gets implemented.
Higher grass because we don't.
Maybe there's just a, a, a sign. The grass is high here because we don't have the money to mow it.
Councilmember Castleberry, then Wilson.
To answer your question, what we've done in the past is the council has said, what if? And Steve said, what if? This is how much the savings is with this, this, and so he gave us a big old long list. What if we cut the streetlights off 50% of the time? That saves us like $700,000 by not having streetlights running. Was one of the proposals. He gave us a list. And so I propose that would be the same process that we would give staff input of, what if we cut the Forrester, what, you know, all these type of things? And then we can, you know, come up and say, you know, of all our suggestions, hey, this saves us $8 million. Okay, well, we don't need to do all of them. Or, hey, we came up with all your list and it still only saved us a million dollars. You know, so I think that's ideally a good direction and then have the manager say, okay, what is the impact of, of your question or your decision? And then we can say, really? We talked about, a couple of years ago, we went to every other week recycling. I mean, not recycling, but trash pickup. And then last year we came back and said, you know what, I want to save you $40,000. And so we went, so we went back to doing every week. We thought it was going to save us all this money and it really didn't.
What if we did council meetings by candlelight?
Okay.
Those would be great ideas, but I mean, that would be the process is that we would make an answer. We could put in there, put a COLA increase, I mean, all the, up or down, whether it is. And then we have some more meetings to, to talk about those type of things.
Okay, last, last fiscal year, twice that I remember, we asked the city manager to make a list of things that was like 600,000 or 700,000 dollars. Have all those things been cut? If they have it, then we need to pull the list back out because we already made the list. We've already seen a list. So I don't know if there would be some different things.
Basically, the things that were on the list were not acceptable to council to be cut.
Right, so we already have one list. Councilmember Wilson first.
One that's just starting, easy targets.
I don't want to draw down the fund balance. I want to prioritize our water. I want to prioritize stormwater in a way that we've never done before. I, I think we've, I think over the last however many years that we've wanted as a city to get a stormwater utility. So we've avoided pushing the dollars over into that stormwater area. So my, my suggestion is that we need to, not all this year, of course. That needs to be our goal. It needs to be our direction. Funding stormwater, which means because the voters have asked us, told us, they do not believe that there's a problem, they do not believe that we need the money, then we need to make, fix the problem, quit talking about it and cut whatever it takes to cut to get it taken care of. Because this city is not going to be viable if it doesn't have drinking water.
Throw out sustainability officer. I mean, we passed ready for 100, but I feel like that's something we could probably contract on the few steps we're ready to make at least in this next year and see if we can bring it back later.
Ready to make some big cuts.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying, those are things that, but.
So I think that.
We get the whiteboard out.
So then we need to hear at the expense of what? When you, when you say whatever.
I think those, those, that's for you guys to figure out.
So that's why she's only 73 pages in the budget.
The issue is going to be, we're already saying we don't want to have, we don't want to cut, cut into the fund balance. So the issue's going to be when we start looking at all these things we're going to cut and then we say, but we're going to move money into stormwater. We're going to fund stormwater like we should be doing it.
Prioritize, not move.
So where does all of that money come from?
That means 2.5 million in cuts, not 1.3.
Two, 2.5 million cuts.
I was just throwing a number out there.
The public said they don't think there's a problem with stormwater and we're going to fix it.
They might have just said they didn't want to fund stormwater.
Council, Councilmember Scott.
Okay, a couple of things then.
We gotta have a link.
Are we powered by any, in any way by solar or, solar or wind energy? Any of our municipal?
OEC, I brought that up.
Any of our, I'm just curious, no? What if we did that? How, would that save us money? I know we've got to, you know, buy some equipment and stuff. I totally get it. Moving on, that's just idea number one. Idea number two, I guess we got to do away with mowing like they said. Number three is people, it seems like the voters don't care about stormwater. They care about quality of life like Norman for, they care about police and public safety and they care about transportation. And so part of transportation is also cart. Are we going to be able to absorb cart? People are suffering and so, but I think that cart should be part of the transportation, our transportation bond somehow because this is something that people do prioritize, whether it's transportation, just on roads and bridges. But public transportation should also be a priority.
Like sidewalks.
And sidewalks. Let's see.
But that's going to get that.
Capital fund. I had another. I had another question. Oh, how much is in our rainy day balance? Can we put some of that in stormwater? I know we've been, you know, uh, you said earlier, we've been commended that we have this sort of like balance that we keep. But can, I mean, it's rainy day fund. When we have rainy days, our infrastructure kind of falls apart. Can we go ahead and just throw some of that into the stormwater balance?
Not by the restrictions in the ordinance for the rainy day fund. Remember that there are strings attached to council's ability to appropriate money out of the rainy day.
So is it only for emergencies?
Have to have drawn down the general fund balance to 1% or below. Uh, you would have had to have a federally declared disaster that has necessitated expenditures that you can't handle. Those sorts of things have to happen before you can draw down the rainy day.
That has to be federally declared.
Yeah.
I would declare it's a local disaster. But what I, so if we did draw down the fund balance, then we would have the ability to possibly pull the money out of the rainy day fund and, and fund some of the things that we need.
Yes. That's one of the ways that you could do it.
Councilmember Wilson.
I have a is it legal question.
Hmm.
And this is a very, so do, don't crucify me public who's listening, um, very spitball out of left field kind of a thing. Can, is it legal to do a citywide ad valorem TIF to fund stormwater? Infrastructure?
You know, to be included in the TIF, property has to meet certain, certain qualifications that are available. So I think you'd have a challenge doing one citywide on that basis.
Well, then maybe we do. I want to get into where there's the most work needed district.
Also not sure that.
A public improvement district.
That envelope of next stormwater is an appropriate expenditure that's not connected to some development.
You can't even more than 35%.
What about old, the old infrastructure though in the, in the, like if you actually, the, the really big ones, like is it like M Hoff Creek or whatever? That's the big, big one that needs to really be, can we draw that district and make that a ad valorem TIF? I mean.
What we want to do away with this?
That would be a, how much would that be? Under 5 million.
We're in the TIF, but we didn't bounce the budget.
Ad valorem.
I don't understand it.
For infrastructure only, not for arenas.
We bounced the budget board, not, we're in the TIF, we're not bouncing the budget.
Okay. Councilmember Hickman and then Scott.
Sean, how much are we budgeting this year for stormwater?
I'd have to look at the numbers. We know approximately. We've been averaging about 3.1 million a year. Again, that's staff and equipment.
Yeah, I, I just want to say that from my perspective, I think from a community credibility standpoint, it's important that we budget at least the same amount for, for stormwater. Uh, because if we cut the budget in stormwater, then we just, we're telling people how critical this is, you know, it's not very consistent messaging. So I don't know what the numbers are, but I do think that.
It is roughly 3.2 million.
3.
Very consistent with last year, not growing.
And I do agree with Councilmember Scott. I think she made a good point, a note that I had made also about the cart deal, you know, talking about what we're, how we're already drawing down 1.3 million, how we're assuming all of the TIF money, we also are not being realistic that we all know that it's going to cost us more than the 600,000 dollars we have budgeted historically to keep the cart system running even at its minimal current service level, you know, and it's, that sounds like it's going to happen next year, next budget year. And so it seems like we're only putting ourselves in a, in a hole right out of, right out of the gate. We, I mean, what that number should be, I don't know, but it seems to me that we ought to at least go ahead and plan for another 500,000 or something, just to have some. Some additional funds in the budget. Um, you know, because otherwise I'm not sure we're ever going to find the money. And I don't think we want to be sitting here in the fall saying, uh, we don't have the money, we're going to have to shut down cart service because we didn't budget for it. And I, I don't know if that would happen or not, but that concerns me.
We've done that. Anthony can speak. Is there a plug number in there right now?
Yeah, but Councilmember Hickman was saying above the number.
Yeah, the plug number is what we've always done, 600, some, 600, some odd thousand, right?
Yes.
Okay. Let me suggest, if you all can be very quick with your questions, that we go on through the rest of this and at least get through the presentation. Yeah, so we're, we're kind of jumping the gun. Okay, Councilmember Scott.
Mine's, excuse me, my kind, mine is kind of a follow up on Councilmember Wilson's question. Instead of a TIF district, I think, um, I think what we could do, I'm not sure it'd be a legal question, but public improvement districts by neighborhood rather than, um, actual TIFs, we could, and then we could leverage the, um, there at Valorem and those neighborhoods, by neighborhood that approves it. Because obviously stormwater wasn't popular all the way across the city, but there are some core neighborhoods that really do need the infrastructure and that may approve that themselves. Um, so I think that's worth looking into and it won't hurt our, hurt our budget as much.
You can do tax assessment districts.
You can do special assessments.
Tax assessment district rather than, rather than public improvement districts. I'm sorry.
But they have to agree to do it.
Right, they have to vote on it.
The property owners have to petition the city.
Which is why I think we should do it by neighbor, like by large neighborhoods.
They have to ask us.
They have, well, I'm a citizen, I'm asking.
It's petition.
For, for your area.
It needs to be like the people in South, and that's something we can certainly pursue. Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Clark.
Uh, I will forego my question.
Okay.
Um, I'll move quickly. These are the areas of unfunded personnel needs that, um, that were requested by the, uh, department managers. And again, these are areas, they're not individual positions. Um, public transportation is included, um, in the general fund budget of about 635,000 dollars currently. There are ongoing negotiations about the city taking over, um, the operation of what are termed to be the city routes and what the cost of that would be. The city is already the recipient of the federal mass transit money, so we would continue to be. And so the difference is how much it would cost to maintain the current service level of those city routes in addition to the federal money and in addition to the general fund money that's already been allocated, if any. Um, and if not, then do we want to continue the current service level? For example, as you know, um, the current administrators of OU cut back the Saturday service and cut back the frequency of the Main Street and Alvinia routes. That's the sort of thing that as the administrator of the public transit system, we would make those decisions. Um, and, and those negotiations are ongoing, so the answer has not been given yet. But just know that the, um, 635,000 dollars is in the budget. Council has made it very clear that your intention is to, um, continue to have a public transit system for the community. And now we just have to work through what, what that means.
So I guess Catherine or Sean, the amount of money, you know, OU was putting in quite a bit of money from student fees and parking money and that kind of thing. Do we know how much, I guess, do we know how much in addition to just those student routes that they ran, that they were subsidizing the other routes?
I think the number was in the range of 1.6 million there, but that included student routes and other services for students. So I'm not sure I can tell you how much went to the remaining public transit system.
But the student routes are the cheapest ones.
Correct. And they're keeping those and they'll continue to, they're keeping their fees.
They're keeping their fees.
They'll keep their dollars and they'll operate their.
There's some part of that 1.7 million in addition to the six.
Right. Uh, some good news here, we, the appropriations tables were just released last week by FTA and we think that 1.7 million number is going to 2 million for us. The timing couldn't be better. We, we think that's the direction that we're going. Uh, we had a really productive meeting today with card and embark folks. We're on a really hard deadline of July 1st, so this is not, this is going to happen. I don't think we can turn this one around or can we do it quickly? So in FY '20, we're going to be operating the transit system. I really think, um, based upon current evaluations, that it's going to cost about 3 to 3.5 million a year.
That's what Chris told us at the CPT CP.
I think somewhere in that, that's the ballpark number that I'm seeing. Um, and, and really excellent services provided by embark, but so if you do the math, you're about 2.6 in the budget. If you need a 3.5, we're about 900,000 short, if, if that were the number.
Is that at current fee levels?
Service levels.
No, I mean, for, in terms of, if we, if we, yeah, in the fair, in terms of fares?
We haven't talked about raising fares. We think the fares are extraordinarily low and have been for a long time.
Well, especially for students, it'll be increased because we're not going to let them ride for free.
So fare increases are part of, the fare elections have been a very small part of their budget so far. So we haven't factored that in yet, but a fare increase could be something council could consider.
Okay. I think it was Councilmember Hickman and then Wilson.
That might comment, yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Clark and then Wilson.
So I get that we're obviously in a financial situation, but it, it sounds like the decision has been made that we are going with embark.
Can't say that, Councilmember. We hope that's really our only, uh, prospect for getting this done by July 1st.
Okay, so that, that deadline kind of, that was our option basically.
Yes, ma'am. They're, they're a public agency, so we don't have to go through private selection, so that would take us until December. So the fact that we can work with a public agency like them and they're, they're a tremendous operator.
I'm not.
The question now is what are they going to charge us?
Well, I'm not entirely opposed to it, given that with the RTA in our future, it's a good time for all of us to be connected. Um, the other comment I would have is how, and not to get too far off base, but are we going to be able to reevaluate the, all of the routes and maybe cut some that just aren't being used and, you know, add some that we know are being used? Is that?
Yeah, I think so. I, I think we've got to be very careful with FTA, with federal transadministration. They expect us to operate at least what is being operated today in order to get that 2 million dollars.
By what metric?
So I think we have to be very cautious about doing any, any other cuts until we at least get the system back running. And then, yes, I think certainly, uh, we can look at this as an organization as to.
And is the fee based on that 2 million too? Or is that?
Yes, that's, I think that's based on population and services provided.
But we could raise the fee without jeopardizing our 2 million?
Correct. That's correct.
Councilmember Wilson.
So, uh, the citizens have, um, voted that they don't want to pay a stormwater utility, but I know that OU has always been treated differently. Is there a way that we can lead with OU as a utility payer of some sort? Can OU, can OU pay their part of stormwater?
Sure they can.
It goes with the property tax on it.
And then my next question is the same question for, uh, fire services as related to OU.
That was going to be mine. Million dollar bill.
And I'm just looking at, I'm just trying to find revenue, obviously. Uh, county, does the county pay anything towards fire service and do we provide any services towards county for fire services?
So if I heard you correctly, uh, do we get reimbursed from OU for fire protection?
No, county, that's one part of it, yes.
Our understanding is that we do not, is that right?
We, it's limited. So when we get three overtime positions per game day, refunded to us. I recently gave you, I believe I said, regarding that. And, um, so no, we provide fire protection for OU property.
Okay, so I would want to look at that in some way.
Anybody else pay for fire protection?
I think we do.
We would do both our taxes.
Well, they do, they pay sales tax too, you know. 20,000 kids, 20,000 kids pay sales tax.
Kids pay the sales tax, cool. But not the university itself.
That's been the answer when that question has been raised in the past.
The 20,000 kids pay sales tax?
That the students, faculty and staff of OU are residents of Norman and, and the general fund is providing services to the residents of Norman, that's been the.
By buying things.
City staff goes down on university grounds, we can't take away their safety.
I would never suggest we take away OU's public safety, but I would suggest that, um, we look creatively at all the revenue sources that are available to us.
Councilmember Castle.
No, I, I agree with that. Um, on the, on the card, do we have anything for, I assume we're going to have to have some personnel, uh, in the budget? Does that include any additional city staff for this or?
What we're hoping, where, where we are in the. So embark, what they call that? They will provide the entire complement of staff, resources, buses, HR, ADA, um, insurance, everything.
Did you anticipate any additional staff to, a cart coordinator or something like that?
The city employees.
We're hoping not. We will pay them for that service.
And I will tell you, as a writer on the bus today, there was an announcement made and a posting on the bus, they're meeting with the staff of drivers and employees of in, of carts on this proposal of them being embark employees instead of cart employees. So that's a current event, that, that meeting is tomorrow. They're shutting down the service for two hours midday so that they can have this meeting of all the drivers and all the employees and mechanics and everything.
Embark is governed by a very aggressive national union, so they're in the union here, not one that we have. And so they're being very careful with their.
Five messages last week about them.
University employees are not, they're just.
Councilmember Scott.
What if we started selling City of Norman swag, like t-shirts and hats?
I think Visit Norman does that.
Oh, do they?
Yeah.
Councilmember Hickman.
Realistically, do you feel like that at a minimum, uh, we should add 500,000 dollars to the, the public transportation budget so we don't find ourselves sitting here at the last minute maybe, uh, if this, if these, I mean, what I don't want to have happen is we're converging where the embark contracts coming to councils, uh, in June, the budget's coming to council in June, and we didn't budget for the extra 5, 6, 700,000 dollars we need to, to have budget for the embark contract and we're like scrambling, you know, at least 500,000 dollars maybe closes the gap to where it's a smaller, you know, hiccup, if you will, at the last minute. And so.
I think that's pretty, that's a good number.
I didn't. That's what he said.
Well, I mean, that's the high number, yeah.
500 gets you in the ballpark.
500 gets you to 3.1, you know, 900, 900 gets you to 3.5. I mean, we don't know what it's going to be. I mean, we could do 900. I mean, I, I don't, you know, um, I'm just trying to soften the blow as minimal as possible with already knowing we're 1.3 in the negative.
Cut 1.3 and then come up with 500 somewhere. So let's find 1.8.
8 is the new number.
Let's find 1.8 million dollars.
Councilmember Wilson.
I have a wacky question. Um, is there such thing as, this isn't really a joke. I'm trying, I'm thinking creatively, but is there, could we buy with civil asset forfeiture funds, a armored street sweeper?
Multipurpose vehicle.
I'm not kidding. Like, who's armored that bad boy and used?
Way to be creative.
I already have concern that that, that is supposed to, is projected to go up 3% this year. We're, we're projected to take 3% more from people this year. It's awesome.
Oh, after we're down to 17%.
I know.
We need to talk about that also.
We're going to take property.
3%.
I'm trying to think about.
7% reduction.
What about adding street sweepers to buses?
I'm, I'm trying to think of the street sweeper in a hostage situation.
I mean, the street would be super clean.
They'd be confused.[1664.65] They'd be confused. It's a diversion.
Glove dust.
You think that the officers would be opposed to sweeping the streets while they're on their way to a SWAT situation?
It's not going to be a lot. Okay, are we still?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't.
Okay, are we, are we through the presentation yet?
Three more slides. Four more slides.
A few more slides. So this would be my segue from the general fund into the other special revenue funds that are considered in the budget. The CLEAT fund, the Community Development Block Grant Fund, the Room Tax, the seizures and restitution fund has been mentioned. Special Grant Fund, the Art and Public Places Fund, the Westwood Cart Fund, all of those funds. We were highlighting a few things that have been talked about, the public safety sales tax fund. And I've heard a consensus from council that instead of incorporating it into the general fund, you would be more comfortable with going back to the separate public safety sales tax fund. But where we have this two and a half to $3 million gap in that fund that grows exponentially going forward, that that continue to be shown in a separate fund with that exponential increasing subsidy from the general fund to, to, to cover that gap. And I want to make sure that that's a clear consensus.
So I, I guess I'm still wondering at what point the people that have said they're not comfortable with it. Because to me, it's good to look at it as part of the general fund. We, I think we are checking on legalities of the ballot language. But at what point you wouldn't just continue doing that when the communications center's finished?
The last of the critical capital needs is Fire Station 5, and that's several years off.
That could be way out.
That's several years off.
So I, I guess that would be part of my question is how long are we going to continue to do that? Councilmember Hickman.
If legally, if the lawyers, legal vehicles say that we can go ahead and do it, my request would be because, would be to have it broken out. You know, to like, if we're looking at our general fund financials on page 57, that there would be a line that would say sales tax dash PSSST. And with, at least that way, we could see it, you know, for the, for the time being, while the, while it might still technically be, should have been kept separate. While we're doing these capital projects, but having it on here, I could be comfortable with that. But I think, I think part of right now what's confusing is that, and I think it's confusing, going to be confusing to the general public, is we're saying that we're adding in the TIF money. You know, and for example, like on expenditures, our expenditures on salaries and benefits went up $12 million. Now, I'm assuming that's because of PSSST.
To the average person, they're going to see this and say, okay, your revenues went up $12 million. Oh, that, part of that's because of that TIF thing.
Why did your salaries go up $12 million? Because there's nothing that identifies this pretty significant change in our general fund financials that people can see. I mean, and I even think somewhere there would be helpful to have a note like we did when we found the TIF money, to have a note that, something that indicates, you know, at least for the first year, you know, for, on the TIF, you know, the addition of those dollars, whether it's a note or if it's somehow shown on the financials. Because, because those are two big changes in our financials that, short of reading a bunch of stuff and understanding, figuring it out, which, I'll be honest with you. I didn't necessarily pick up on it the first couple of times I went through this. And I was trying, I was like, what the heck's going on here? I just think it would be helpful, at least on the, primarily on the PSSST side, to break out the sales tax and expenses pieces. So that people can see them, you know, at least for this first year, but I would say maybe even for several years. Or maybe even for the period of time that we would maybe otherwise have accounted for them separately. That's my viewpoint, and Robert may not necessarily agree because the CPA guy, but I, I just think it's helpful to the public. Because right now, these are very confusing, you know, with those two things being added in. And there's really no breakout of the expenses and the revenues. If you're just looking at the one-page financial, which a lot of people aren't going to go digging through all this to, to understand that change.
So the question would be, what is the consensus of council? What do you want us to do? I mean.
I think it's a separate fund. You have a separate revenue source. I think it's a separate fund. It's not, it's not a fund 50 deal or 10. I mean, it's, I think it's a separate deal until you complete all your obligations. That's what the ballot language says. And then at some point in time, you say, okay, well, the ballot language says we're going to hire all these people subject to this revenue. Well, if these positions aren't funded, then you have to look at, can we fund those? If we can't fund those positions with this dedicated revenue source, then you don't have those positions. And I agree that, that is my concern. If we rolled into the general fund and we fund other positions. And we, because, you know, I understand, Mayor, you're saying we don't have the money to fund them, but technically the sales tax is being collected. You know, and, and arguably, we do have the money. If we rolled into the general fund and we hire other positions out of the general fund, are we shooting ourselves in the foot and making the argument of the independent, you know, it being a separate fund, that we don't have the positions? Because at least we can look at that fund and say, yep, there's no money left. We're not going to hire any more people for the time being. It might make it more legally defensible. And so those are my, that's what I'm struggling with, and I don't know the answer to those questions. But to me, a compromise, if there is one, is to break it out on the general fund sheets. But I mean, I, I can't disagree with what Robert's saying. I do think that it's maybe cleaner to keep them separate.
I think it's cleaner to do that. I, I don't know that it's going to make a big difference in our discussion with the public. I do understand what the argument is and if it's, you know, if it's okay to do it that way, then just leave it in the PSSST and change the general fund.
I think if you call Minglin it, you're losing it. Once you come, once you stick down a general fund, that was one of the, the arguments, discussions about when we first did it. At that point in time, we first did, when we did the PSSC2, it was all this excess revenue that we're going to have when it ends. That's just going to go into the general fund as a slush fund. There's not going to be excess revenue. Everybody's concerned about, you're going to make this thing permanent. You're going to have this little slush fund.
I do remember those.
Remember those slush funds?
And if nothing else, I hope that council will be reminded that that was always the discussion.
Yes.
That, that, that the PSSST was not going to cover all of its costs. We knew that. We said that publicly. We projected that. It's worse than we projected, but, but that was always publicly stated. So, so I hope that you will leave here with this direction, that, that we're going to have this number. Inter-fund transfer from the general fund to the public safety sales tax fund, that's going to be a large and growing number.
When do you anticipate that happening? I mean, does it need a full $2 million next year?
It'll be in this budget.
Is it going to start in December? Or is it going to start, I mean?
No, it'll start July 1st.
July.
So where are, where are you upside down now?
Yes.
That's why you rolled it in.
That's why we rolled it in.
But you still have some fund balance.
There was no fund balance. There was an $85,000 fund balance, but again.
You transferred it.
It was transferred in.
Yeah, so I, so make sure that I'm clear. On our financials, the general fund financials, on the part about, says audit adjustments encumbrances. I assume that I slash F transfer, that that's where you would put that entry to show, you know, so that, you know, the, the $2 million bucks or whatever we're writing out of the general fund to subsidize the PSSST, it'll be listed on here. And it'll still draw down on the general fund, available funds or balance or whatever. It'll, it'll, it won't make a net, the financials, as we look at them right now, won't make a net, it won't make a net difference. It'll just be the way it's accounted for. The revenues will go down some, the expenses will go down.
Be a big number, inter-fund transfer expenditure in the general fund, inter-fund transfer revenue in the PSST.
Councilmember Castbury.
Part of the PSS, I answered, no, I forgot my question. Does this budget include, in, in November, we passed a resolution that we were going to make Norman Public Schools whole if we ended the fund, ended the TIF. Does this budget include that number?
Extra expenditures to the Norman Public Schools? No.
Because we don't know what it is?
Because we don't know what it is, nor have we negotiated that there would be anything to be made whole. In other words, there has been no project plan amendment that has been approved that would say that Norman Public Schools are losing anything. And if so, how much? And that's, that's what is part of the negotiations that are ongoing right now, that have to be completed by June 30th.
Okay, but I always understand that we all said that.
Right now, remember, there's no change.
The resolution said we're going to make them whole, but we just don't know what that is.
There's no change proposed right now to the ad valorem apportionment. The only change is to the sales tax apportionment this year.
Gotcha, okay. So if we keep it that way, then there is no, there's still.
Nothing to be made whole.
They're not affected.
Okay. Westwood?
Um, Westwood Fund, to general, the Reader's Digest version, the Aquatic Center and the Tennis Center profit, the golf course has a net loss.
Cut it.
So these are the major issues that we have talked about already. There is this ongoing imbalance between revenues and expenditures. And how do we address that going forward? There is a lack of adequate funding, Councilmember Wilson, for stormwater. How do we address that? There is an inadequacy for fleet maintenance, Sean. How do we address that? We need more park maintenance personnel. The mowing schedules are behind. And oh, by the way, we are adding hundreds of acres of parkland through Norman Forward. Norman Forward has a little bit of a budget to expand the mowing personnel, but, you know, mowing schedules are going to get worse when Ruby Grant Park in particular comes online.
Councilmember Clark.
So we recently had an opportunity to hear someone's ideas on public-private partnerships. What if we started with our 60-city parks, which is great, until you have to maintain them like an adopt park? Where we ask churches to, you know, put signage up and.
I was just talking about that today, and OK Adapt is interested in adopting Andrews Park.
Okay, so maybe that's something we could get creative with and try and cut back on our mowing.
Maybe just the big parks.
Or HOAs could do like, you know, my HOA could do the Highland Village Park. And it could be a fun community building thing and give them signage and thank them and highlight a different adopted park in the city manager's weekly letter.
Does HOAs have excess funding?
True.
We have an adopted park program.
We are, yeah.
Well, we should start beefing that baby up.
But does that include them taking over maintenance, though? Is that what that means?
I don't think so.
It's flower, it's flower planting.
I want mowing and trash.
I mean, I do, I mean, I know that everybody's got budget issues, but I mean, I'm looking at you, Brendan, because, you know, you know, we had the conversation about the library system. I mean, you know, that person you're referring to, Bree, also talked about, you know, our community partners. And, you know, we as a city have done a lot, in a lot of ways, for our community partners. And not that we've gotten bad negotiations or bad deals, but it's time to go back to our partners and say, look, we're in a really tough spot. And we have a legitimate story to say, you know, we need you guys to start picking up some of these things. You know, and part of that could be with the school district, you know, with the, the rec centers, you know, and, and all those programs. I mean, I don't know that, you know, I don't know how that affects the budget, but just as an example, something that came to my mind. You know, we have the library system with Pioneer, you know, and what we pay, you know, associated with that. You know, we have the rec centers that I know provide summer programming and whatever other things, but a lot of those are associated with, you know, school age kids. You know, are there, are there partnership opportunities there that they could help fund some of those things? I, I don't know. But I do think that we, you know, hopefully can, you know, explore all options.
We did a great job negotiating the fund deal. Councilmember Scott.
First, I think the public-private partnerships are wonderful. I bet the, like, local Sierra Club and other nonprofits would be really interested in adopting a park or a stream or whatever. And then my, I guess my second question is, we haven't talked about, or I haven't seen in here as a senior center, like, funding or anything about that. And I guess that would be capital. That was my question, if it was going to be in the capital budget then.
Yes, ma'am. It'd be, that's a Norman Forward project, and it, and it's a capital project that will be discussed next week.
Okay, thank you.
The construction of the senior center. There is a general fund for operations of the senior center that exists, but I'm assuming you mean.
It would roll into the new one, the new facility. Two things. We've discussed for some time now, trying to turn over at least the rec centers to Norman Public Schools because they can at least do the maintenance, and that's one less thing we have to pay for. But there's something about fair market value, right? They have to buy it from us.
That's right. They have to, they have to buy it at fair market value.
Like, can we, can we not waive that? Just sit here.
Because they were financed with general obligation bonds. You can't donate them or anything like that. And also understand that if the schools buy them, then they will not be public recreation centers anymore, that they will only be. Yeah.
So there's no major, like, we're not out, okay. And then the other thing I have forgotten.
Just Councilmember Hickman.
Just so we, I'll ask the unpopular question that's, I think, something that, you know, we need to be aware of. I'll look at our HR person. Do we have the ability to do furloughs or to go to four-day work weeks in some, some divisions or some areas of the city? I mean, salaries are a huge part of our budget, right? You know, those are unpopular conversations, but I think we need to be aware or know what our options may or may not be.
Our laws in the past.
How does that work?
Did it. And we got rid, I mean, we were taken to arbitration by the unions.
Did we win the arbitration?
Well, we didn't do.
We didn't implement them for the unions.
We didn't do fireplace, so it was non-union. They got furloughed. Only non-union.
What about for non-fire in police?
They didn't get.
They didn't get furloughed. It was only non-union.
Those departments are earlier understaffed as it is. We could get furloughed any of them. Do I have the ability to go to a shorter work week? I mean, I, you know, I don't know, but the difference between that.
It'd be affecting their pay, so they would.
What about what some companies do where it's called?
Job sharing?
No, they, they work nine hours Monday through Thursday and have every other Friday off. Because then it's a quality of life thing, too, because you get.
Sure, and we've had.
It pays the same.
We've had.
Pays the same, but we could turn the office off, you know?
Some divisions have had those schedules. Police had those schedules for a while. We can do that. We can change, mostly with our admin. Police and fire do 10-hour days right now. I'm not saying.
10, or 10s?
Yeah, we can, we can do those things. Not saying it'll stick, you know. We can go to court. But we can do some of those things.
I want to caution everybody because I've been in a lot of organizations when we've talked about budgets and budget cuts. And we still have reserves on this budget. I, I agree with you all that, yes, it's time to start looking at the hard cuts. But I think you want to be very, very careful about how you do that. Because the money is the tax mayor's money, and it is for services. That's what the money is for. So I, I think you have to be really careful that you're not cutting deeper than you really need to cut. Or that we need to cut. So I. And, and a lot of people are going to look at that, too, and say, look at all the reserves you have, and you're cutting all this stuff. So that's something you have to keep in your head while you're doing this. Councilmember Castbury, then Fearman.
You just made my comment out of say, when you have reserves and you're cutting, it's hard to say, we have savings, but yet we're letting people off, so.
In two years, we're not.
In two years, that's when you cut.
It's going to hurt a lot more in two years.
Councilmember Fearman.
Councilmember Holman was partially making my point is that this is what we've done for the last five to six years. Is only do just enough to push it off just another year, but we can't keep doing that. At some point, we're going to have to make the hard, unpopular, difficult cuts that a lot of people are going to hate. We're going to catch a lot of grief, but we need to do that. And so, yes, we have reserves. We're not going to in two years. And continuing to just do just enough to push us off another two years just means we're going to have to deal with it two years from now. So we have to look at the systemic changes to really get us in a better spot. But we also have to look at, how are we going to do what we need to do now? So that we're not facing this dire five-year forecast that we've been looking at for five years and nothing has changed. All we've done is nip and tuck and slim and trim.
Well, it hasn't just been for five years. We've been doing the same thing for, the councils have been doing the same thing for 10 years.
And we keep waiting for just something outside of our control to change, to make things better, so we don't have to make these cuts. And we just, we can't keep waiting for that anymore, because as we've seen, it's not going to happen. It's not. And so I think until, until we show the public that we're serious, that we really are in the dire circumstances that we try to claim that we are to get a stormwater utility, Norman residents have approved $200 million in bonds in the last two months. Norman residents are generous people. They are more than willing to take the money out of their own pockets when it is something that they feel they need, and certainly when it's something that they want. And so what we need to do is show them that stormwater and our bud, our city budget is just as dire as our roads and just as dire as Norman Public Schools' capital needs. And we, we're not going to do that by just doing just enough to get us by another year. It's just, it's just not going to work. We're never going to show them that we need a stormwater utility if we just keep doing that, because that's what we've been doing. And twice Norman residents have said, no, that's not good enough. So we have to, it has to hurt. It's going to hurt everyone and us more than anyone, because we're going to have to be the ones to make those decisions. But it can't be little, and it can't be just enough to get us through to the next year. It has to be more than that.
Councilmember Scott.
I just have a, I guess, a quick question. What fees could we raise to increase revenue? Because that was a big chunk of our revenue. I mean, what all can we look at?
The major fees in the general fund are, are building permits and licenses. And again, you have to balance that with competing jurisdictions and what their fees. And again, you have to balance that with competing jurisdictions and what their fees are. And, but again, if you're just asking what fees could we raise?
Those are really the, our options.
Those are the major areas, yes, in the general fund.
Because connection fees go to water fund, development, all the, they go to enterprise funds.
Right, exactly.
Help the general.
The general fund did have the permit.
Start writing more Nordwood disviations. All that article. Well, if we stop mowing, we can find ourselves for high grass.
Yeah, right here, fees and charges. I guess that's total protective revenue.
It's kind of funny, but I mean.
We'll take it, we'll take it out of the water.
The lines.
Yeah, that'll work.
Okay, Councilmember Castleberry.
I do want to say that, keep in mind, we have to, by state law, pass a budget. So we have to work this stuff out. It can't be at the last meeting in June, and we all are now fiscally responsible, and we vote no on the budget.
We're talking about it tonight. Everyone of us has said. We want something done.
Okay, so we need to work these things out in the next couple of weeks, in the next couple of months, so let's not have any surprises at that meeting.
Yeah, so what I've heard as a consensus here is that you, you want us to cut $1.3 million out of the general fund budget.
1.8.
Yeah, plus the $500,000 for CARDS, so yeah, that's 1.8. I haven't really heard areas that you want to cut, so you've left that to the city manager.
Other than mentioning a few of the different positions.
I think the departments have to, I mean, you guys have to tell us what you, what you can cut without affecting services.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, I agree with that. I think, I look to the city manager and the department heads.
That's what I need.
You know, to figure out the best way to.
You have to affect services.
Well, then we have to know what the effect is on those services, and we have to make that decision. Can we live with this cut in these services? I mean, we have to know, we have to know the ramifications of our cuts.
And I would, my request would be honestly to bring options. You know, here's one package, here's, you know, you know, whatever. That, that would be.
And revenue.
I was gonna say, I do like Alex's point about talking about maybe what fines and fees we can, we can increase and what impact that will.
We're talking about that Thursday.
Yep, those need to be increased anyways.
At least a 500, I would like to see a thousand. Park the handicap spot, swap for it.
Now, just, it's often counterproductive to raise fines because.
Alternative, yeah, okay.
The intent is to change the behavior.
Yeah, right.
And so if what happens is people stop parking in handicap spaces, then you don't.
To me, that is a fine trade-off.
Same with the plastic bag fee, you can't really, you don't want to raise money on it because you want them to not.
I'd like to see a thousand.
Nobody for newspaper here.
Too bad, too bad we're not making money, more money on.
Next Tuesday is our public hearing. I want more than three people to come to our public hearing and tell us what they want to cut.
Can we have a Facebook event for that to help promote it? Because Councilmember Hickman's been very good with city planning and transportation and that, but I'd like to see the city.
They could have paid more in permit fees.
I'll be, I may be back on the line by next Tuesday.
Councilmember, Councilmember Clark.
Uh, I suggested maybe to encourage public engagement to talk about services we can and cannot live without, and to get feedback on where we should cut, what they prioritize. I think we should publicize it more. Onalise could do the Norman News press release, and I think it could be in the city managers, and then even a Facebook event, so we can invite people that way.
Part of the council meeting, is that right?
I think.
Yeah, it's a public hearing.
I think that is a very good idea.
We got another one in May.
And then I had a question that you might be able to answer. When we did go to every-other-week trash service, it does, I get it that it goes to the enterprise fund, but I hear all the time.
It was just yard waste, it wasn't trash.
Well, okay. Well, I've heard all the time, why can't we play around with that and go to every-other-week trash and every-week recycling?
That's also a enterprise fund.
Well, that's what I mean, it's all.
Which we don't have a problem with, we're in good shape with those, for the most part.
But.
Their fund balance is strong.
Is that an option, to reduce the trash pickup to increase recycling, since it's in the same family, if you will?
It doesn't help the general fund, is my point.
Oh, I know, but.
That's another issue, because right now, recycling's not on the upswing as far as what you can do with recycled materials, so.
So we may need to just.
The other thing is, it's nice in the wintertime, but sometimes you don't want to make it every other week in the summertime, because then the trash.
My garage smells bad enough as it is.
Okay, so, but that may be something that we have to consider anyways to cover the increase of recycling.
I mean, I think police fire sanitation or fire services is supervised. And roads, of course, gotta drive.
Legal representation, I'll speak for the mowers.
Okay, so, here's, here's what I would ask. I, I keep hearing, we're punting this back to the staff. So I know that there have been several lists made, there were at least two last year, so that's a starting point. And if council members, and Roberts made a really good point, the decisions have to be made, it can't be, it can't be kicked down the road, that's what you all are talking about. So the decisions have to be made by, when's the first next slide?
Wrong, we're probably meant to the end.
Yay.
Good job, Anthony.
Yeah, there, there are three of these study sessions to introduce the budget. Next meeting is cap, is a capital fund, and on the 30th is the enterprise budget. But throughout the process, certainly at the fines cleaning meeting later this week, we can entertain more input. Individuals can give us ideas, both from the council and from the public, of areas that you would say are at a lower priority, and we would work from that. So we'll certainly get more input at the public hearing next week, and the process is ongoing.
So maybe there can be some comments about this at the public hearing, that the council is now considering making some cuts to this budget.
Yes, ma'am.
Based on.
Now, and I would ask, see, when we have gotten this sort of direction in the past, here's this number to come up with. What I heard differently tonight is that you're comfortable with it being things that the public will fear, because, because historically, when we have gotten that number, the city manager has worked from the Champaign Court of making it painless.
This is the way it has to be.
It could have been painless, but now it's gonna have to be.
It's been painless for the last, how many years?
Now it's gonna be.
Okay, my turn.
Tackle adopt park.
The stormwater.
Okay. Councilmember Scott.
Okay, when I was going through the document, I'm wondering how much of the city council budget could be cut from, because, I mean, it's not like we get paid much anyway. I think we could talk about maybe just doing away with, like, some of the, I know there's equipment and things really that go into most of our, what we get in our sort of section, but it's about a million or so.
Agencies.
Oh, okay.
And test the agencies.
Yeah, those agencies are things that we can.
Yeah, like, we can cut out of the city council's budget, like, the pens and whatever.
What page is that on, that lists all the agencies?
It's the reserve.
That's what it is.
Oh, okay. Like, the O M L training, and like, when they send y'all to D C.
It's not.
I know, it's not like for us.
Service fees. It's how we get those legislative updates, it's them lobbying for us.
Which we get online anyway. We've cut O M L before.
If there's anything we can cut out of there, like, even our salaries.
Cut her salary.
Yeah.
I, I would respond, but we have cut O M L before, but that has been so helpful, because we're dealing with possibly Center City getting preempted. Senate Bill 1001 passed today.
Yeah.
So they're definitely not.
Well, I don't, I don't want to cut out of that.
They're still in line on our behalf, anyway.
I would just like to.
We have the same issue from St. Paul's.
I would just like to look at what we can take or get out of there.
Part of it's cart money.
Part of it's cart money, too.
Yeah.
Just in general, just in, in general, whatever can be taken out of there, let's put that in part of the, it's part of the proposal. If it, what's not critical, what can we live with, what can we live without?
Except stormwater.
Okay, 131 of your budget, under city council's budget, the vast majority of that are these outside-agency funding requests.
And it's the O M L stuff.
And the 1% emergency reserve.
The outside-agency stuff, Center for Children and Families, CARDS, N E D C, ACOG, I mean, Guam's Cruiser, I mean, all that stuff is, that's the biggest majority of that, that and the 2%. Well, no, we didn't do 2% this year. Or 1% this year. So, I mean, if you want to rethink that allocation, we can reduce it.
Yeah, just anything, honestly, that we can sacrifice from that section.
Councilmember Castleberry.
Uh, two comments. I, I don't think that stormwater should be taken off the table. It's, if we're gonna, if everything on the table, everything on the table, the citizens have told us twice, they don't, they do not want to pay for stormwater. It's not a priority of theirs. So I think that we have to listen at some point in time, and we can't just say.
No, they're saying that they don't want to pay for it.
Then they do. If you don't want to pay for something, that means you don't want the service. The second thing I would say is, I am more than willing to have finance weekly meetings, talk about this with anybody, you know, if we need to have special sessions to do this, and I think we should, because I don't think two meetings is gonna solve this problem. This is a big problem. So I think we need to schedule more time for us to get together, either in subcommittees or, you know, whatever it is, when you guys have a channel, you've got a lot to work on, but when you have some stuff to come back with, I think we need to have more than just the schedule of meetings, the special meetings to cover this, because we're in a, I mean, I hate to say this, but I'm excited the council is finally realizing that we have budget problems, as everybody has passed budgets in the past with these same issues, and then we're not kicking down. But since we aren't kicking the can down the road anymore, that means that we, we have to meet more and figure out what those things are. This can't be one of those, all these amendments that we have, like we've done in the past, then, because, well, we cut this, we cut, and we're all trying to recalculate. Anthony's like, are we still budget? Okay, well, may I add this, you forgot about amendment three. I mean, ideally, I would like to go into the June 11th meeting with the budget pretty much already. We know we're gonna be, not a bunch of, hey, I got an idea, that we've already cussed and discussed all those things.
Well, if something comes up at the last minute, that I am not going to commit my vote here in this meeting.
Of course not, I'm just talking about, I, hopefully, if we have more meetings, if we have more meetings, more discussions, those things can be hashed out before that happens. If not, we'll have those two meetings, we can.
Let's take them, let's. Let's get the, let's give the staff some time to come up, work up some options, and then, I mean, I have no problem meeting more frequently if we need to. I agree, it's important, it's gonna be difficult.
Agreed.
Staff understands what their charge is, our charge is, as you come up with ideas, send them to Mary?
Oh, I have so many, I'll just. Mostly like fun, like, let's get a bunch of people to bicycle to generate electricity or.
Okay. Any more comments? If not, I, this meeting is adjourned.
Bicycle, we can walk around with like, solar.